All right, good evening. I'd like to call the December 4, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I do not have any announcements this evening. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently on our agenda? Saying is no. I will move into item one. The Audit Exit Conference with Jennifer Reddington, CPA from Melanson Heath, and Jean. Love it. If you guys need a blanket or anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to introduce Jennifer. She's the one that is in charge of our audit for the town. We just completed our 2018 audit, and she's going to walk us through it. You have the audit in front of you.
Right. So, I will walk you through the financial statements. Main themes are going to be that everything is very consistent from the prior year. You guys do have a tight budget, but you manage it well. There's not too many things that -- we've talked about OPEB and net pension a lot in the past couple of years, so we'll just go through. If you do have any specific questions, just let me know at any time. So, you can turn to the first page after the Table of Contents. This is your independent audits report, and you, again, received a clean opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive from an independent audit. And if you continue on to page three, this is the Management Discussion and Analysis. It's a narrative overview of the results of operations for the year. It attempts to put the numbers of the financial statements into words. We did have a change this year. If you could go to page five, I just wanted to point out one thing. With the implementation of GASB-75, there was a prior period restatement, so I just wanted you to know that, and it is on page 54 of the financial statements. So, if you took this first bullet of the financial statement highlights and tried to compare this number to the actual financial statements last year in this same bullet, they won't tie -- I shouldn't say they won't tie, they won't come to this variance here because of the restatement. If you go to 54, you will see that there were -- was the adjustment of the OPEB, and then there was an unbilled adjustment. So, if you take last year, that number sitting in this bullet was $58,509,146. It has been adjusted to the $49,697,211. If you take that number compared to the $48,231,521, you'll get the $1,465,690. So, I just wanted you to know that if you do compare the two reports together, there was that change in the back. Okay. So, we can continue on to page 11, which is the first numbers pages of the financials. It combines all of your funds into two columns. You have your governmental activities, general fund, special revenue, capital project, and trust is all in the first column. Business type is your water sewer and your transfer station, which is in detail on page 18. This is the only place of the financial statements where you have your capital assets, long-term debt. Again, we've talked about OPEB, which is now fully on your books, and the net pension for the past couple of years, so I don't have too much else I'm going to say on this page. Unless you have questions, we can go to page 13. And this is more of how the town keeps their books. Again, very consistent with the prior year. The third number up from the bottom, your unassigned fund balance of $2,882,182 in that first column. It's, you know, the most important number in the financial statements arguably, and that's where the free cash calculation starts as well. Within that number, you have your stabilization balance and your unassigned fund balance. That's the percentages they look at, and that's the percentages you look at to see if you're in line with your fiscal policies. And right now, your stabilization balance is at about 3.6% of your budget, and your fiscal policy is to have that go up to 5%. That's your goal.
And we did do a transfer at the annual town meeting to bring that back up.
Okay.
So, you'll see it in that 519.
Okay. Overall, your unassigned fund balance is 5.8% of the budget, and, you know, the two combined is 9.4% of the budget. And that's right in line with what the bond rating agencies like to see between the 5%, 5 to 10%. Your free cash has been steady for the last three years, which is another strong financial indicator. So, doing well. We can turn to page, I think it is 17. This is your budget versus actual. If you go into the middle of the page, you can see total revenues and other sources. Just above that, you'll see your -- two items above that, you're going to see use of free cash. If you go to the middle and third column, you're going to see that you spent $1,280,143 of your free cash. If you go to the far right-hand column, in the -- right in the middle of the page, you had revenue in excess of your budget of $761,000. Last year, that was $751,000. So, again, you're very consistent from year to year, which is good. Down at the bottom, and still in that far-right column, second number up from the bottom, you had turnbacks of $835,348. Last year, that was $810,000, so very consistent. And your total turnbacks for the year is $1,596,397. So, though you're -- you spent 1.2, you were able to recoup 1.5. So, you have a, like you said, you have a tight budget, but you are managing it well. We can continue to the next page. There's no numbers on this page. I was just going to mention what your free cash amounts were. Your water and sewer went down slightly to $243,000, and your transfer station was very consistent with the prior year at $275,000. And then, we can go to page 21. The last financial statement page. You have your OPEB, which you are contributing to, and then your private purpose, trust funds, which are scholarship trusts, your agency, which is performance bonds and student activity funds. Overall, you know, you guys have a strong financial position. You steady free cash. Your financial percentages are right in line of where they should be. There was no management letter. Again, this year, we did have a small side letter for a few cleanup items, and just to let Jean be aware for GASB-84 and 87 that are coming up, one dealing with agency funds, the other dealing with leases. And, you know, everything was in good working order when we came in. Everything was reconciled, and I just want to thank Jean and the whole financial team, Matt, that, you know, everything is always a pleasure to work with. We always, you know, get requests back timely, and it's always very nice to work with everybody here.
Good job.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank my finance department as well, as well as the other departments. Reconciling timely helps me close the books. Chief is very good at closing his grants and getting the money back, so we don't get hit for free cash. So, it really is a group effort. Definitely can't do this without their support. So, you know, I do want to thank them. They do help us get a successful audit.
Excellent.
Good job.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item two, GBI request for tree removal and grading on 49 Glen Street.
Bill Pybus is here to speak on this.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Bill Pybus for Guaranteed Builders. I don't know if you can see that, who they have, unless they've copied it.
So, Mr. --
You can pass.
Do you understand, was there a change since this was previously submitted?
I'm not sure, gentlemen.
I was told that this is the new change.
This is a new change.
This is the new change from the previous change.
And has the town engineer had a chance to review any of these things?
If you -- I don't know. He hasn't had a chance to review this one.
Right.
But if you look at your -- in your packet, the very last page in -- on this item should be the email from him.
Yep, I have it.
I didn't get it in my book.
Let's see. Very last page, you said?
Should be the last. Well...
In the email correspondence?
No, it would be in your packet that you pulled out of your folder.
Which is the back.
You stay -- oh, you stay.
All together, yeah.
Okay. It would have been this one right here. This letter right here, this email. Okay, that's going to be titled, "Proposal, 49 Glen Street Tree Removal and Grading." Nope, should have been the very last, after the big map.
Ah.
Very last.
Just hitting it.
There you go.
Okay.
That is in your packet. That's going to be -- hold on. That would be a little ways back. Not sure exactly how many. Dated November 28th. Do you want me to read it, or do you have it?
I'm digging for it.
All right.
This one?
Yes.
Sure.
Starts out, build, reading, granting, and easement.
Required. All right, so this seems to be in a town meeting.
Yes.
In a disposition procurement, earth removed from town property has values, so there's another procurement. Our benefit prevailing wages would apply to the work. So, there's really no action that this board can take outside of town meeting as it pertains to the request from GBI. Is that a fair assumption?
Right. You would be putting a warrant article on for consideration in May.
In May. All right.
Unless you met earlier than that.
I think we're staying on track for a May town meeting.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm happy to entertain you going through it. Do you anticipate that there would be additional changes to this plan prior to May?
I don't perceive anything. Yeah, I think as a general matter, this has been discussed for a while, and it is in the interest of the town through its water conditioners, which is why I think Bill and I both feel a little bit out of fish out of water talking about it, because this is property that they control. But when it snows, there has to be snow removal and ice removal on the driveway to the pump station. We have to have access to the pump station at all times. The grade to Glen Street is so aggressive that it is actually dangerous to plow, and the area is shaded, so when there's any sort of melt, it refreezes, and it's very, very difficult to maintain access to the pump station. So, it's just as a general matter, this is a good project. This is thoughtful. I think what everybody's got to realize is there's a lot of complexity. The town, first of all, an easement is an interest in real property, and only town meeting has the authority to dispose of any interest in real property or take one on. The second issue is what we really want to see is that the new access road actually be a material improvement over the existing grade. So, the existing grade is 12 to 14%. The proposed grade in the plan is 11 and 1/2%. We'll look at an 8 and 1/2. So, that's what I mean. Maybe this isn't ready for prime time, because Bill went out there today and with his engineers' surveyors' tools and measured it at 11 and 1/2. So, we've got to get agreement on that. If you're -- what you say is correct, and it's 8 and 1/2, it would be a substantial improvement. And so, it would be a project that we could recommend that the town do, but it would be made by the time I think we have all of this lined up. The other part of this is it's a strange technicality, I think. I call it strange. In Massachusetts procurement law, the town owns property. In this case, gravel, I don't know if it's common borrow, if it's nice sandy gravel, I don't know what's there, but it has value. And so, in order to dispose of an item of value, we have to comply with Chapter 30B, which is an auction, a disposal of surplus town property. We can't lock into a trade, even though the trade is logical, because the value may line up between the grading and paving work versus the value of the fill that's going to be taken away. But we just -- we can't do that. So, we actually have to do sort of a double. We have to sell the fill, and we have to award the contract for the installation of the driveway. And, you know, as long as we advertise properly and solicit bids, we'll recover it if you come in and you're low. But there's all these process steps that have to be taken, not the least of which would be the actual permit modification before the planning board. That's probably the first step. Get the planning board to sign off and say, yes, you can take that fill out of there, and we're fine with it. It's a modification of your existing removal permit. Once that's in place, we can decide what to do from there. But I just want -- I would want to signal to GBI that this is an appropriate improvement to be made. So, you know, I don't want to stand in the way of it. We just have to get all this paperwork done, and it's not something that the Board of Selectmen can do much more than signal conceptual approval of.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we've talked about the project a couple of times, and it sounds like it's kind of a mucky road that needs to go through. And, you know, as town meeting's in May, which is really going to be the deciding body on if we can move forward on it, regardless of if this board approves or doesn't approve of it, it's really up to town meeting as to where we go further. I think it's a little, I'd say premature to be going over that at this point. That's just where I sit with it. I mean, there's no vote called for here, is that correct?
No. Well, you -- I really can't.
Right.
You don't have the authority, and neither does anybody in the administration, so...
No, but I mean, based off of it, I mean, it sounds like a win-win for everybody. Like, I mean, it helps out with the property that GBI is trying to utilize and gets the fill out of there, and we definitely need to do something about that access road.
So, I think we just encourage the town engineer to keep working with you guys to refine this proposal. I think we owe you a sort of a recipe laundry list to mix metaphors of all the things that -- the steps that we need to take to be ready for. And just because town meeting's in early May, we have to really get the warrants sewn up and get all of this, the technical side of this wrapped up in spring. So, we really only have a couple of months.
Like March, April.
To work this through and get it finalized.
What if the existing gravel is not sold per se, and it's -- they've got a storage area open in behind the old BFW there that you could store it in, and then you've got the use of it for the highway department and so forth?
I never say no to anything without researching it. You know, I'll speak to Mr. Ferno and see if he would have a use for the material.
That makes sense.
Well, many times he asks to go out and buy it, and...
No.
Why not have our own?
If he stockpiles it there, it's for his use. Anytime he sees fit, and there are many, many times that he needs it, so...
Can you follow up and see if that is a viable option?
I will do that.
So, that way the town isn't disposing of it.
Right.
That works for me. So, and so the next steps are is look into that one to see if that's feasible, at least legal. I don't know what master of law and all that stuff is. And then, if we can get Bill to provide the laundry list as to everything that they need to get a nice clean article put together. But I mean, overall, conceptually, I agree with Matt. It's a great project.
Yeah, because the existing driveway is...
It's brutal.
It's waiting for an accident to happen.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that at all.
Pretty much has already happened. We just were fortunate. We didn't hit --
Exactly.
We didn't hit anybody. We just kind of slid down the hill.
Well, you can end up with a brick across the street.
Yeah.
Are the fish biting? I mean, I guess that would be the thing, if you end up with that.
We'd be fine, you know.
So, but Matt will work on getting Bill to put the laundry list of things that you need to get put together and look into the idea on retaining the fill and see if that gives us an avenue around some of the other complexity on it. If it clears the water a little bit, that'll be good.
Yep.
And we'll work with you to make sure that we get a clean warrant article put together to get in front of town meeting.
Well, if we can find a way that there's not disposing of them, would you still need town meeting? You're not disposing of any property. It's moving it from one location to another.
Repurposing, I guess.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
But then what -- where does the easement come in? It's the easement that requires town meeting, I think so.
Well, the existing driveway or the new driveway would still be on town property, and we're just -- we're giving you all the labor and machinery and...
I'm not sure why there's discussion of an easement, though.
Is this one of the days that Bill's not here?
Well, you know...
To his point, though, I mean, I think if that does get rid of the real property aspect of it, or the disposal of the property, and we can do it, I don't know if we can do it outside of town meeting at that point or not.
Technically, what he's referring to, it is a grading easement. Let's see that.
Would that require town meeting?
Yes. So, that's Rich Bowen's advice, and Jay Talaman. Both councils say that that -- the grading easement requires town meeting.
Okay.
It's an interest in real property. I don't know. Three years law school, I don't know what a grading easement is.
I will tell you, that's the first time I've seen those two words put together.
Yeah, so I'm...
I don't recall seeing them before.
We'll have to determine exactly what he means, but as soon as you say the word easement, that's an interest in real property, and that what the lawyers are saying is that that absolutely has to go through town meeting.
So, it's Jay Talaman that you'd probably want to bring that as opposed to trying to bid the fill out?
Right.
Harvest the fill and utilize it for town use?
One of the, you know, really important part of -- parts of Bill's feedback as well is we'd like a cross-section of the driveway. You know, how thick is the pavement going to be? What's going to be the underlayment?
I can understand it.
As an engineer, he really wants to see that.
He likes the nuts and bolts.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no explanation here of what a grading easement means, so I'm not sure how that interests the discussion.
So, we just got a couple of follow-up items to go back to?
I think we're back to square one, which is this proposal is a good concept, and we'll move forward with it, and -- but we still have these details to iron out, exactly what is everybody talking about here. We first started hearing about this a long time ago, but really details only a few days ago. So, it's taking some time to absorb what we see.
So, if we could let Matt and town councils do some homework and see what we can't do on that, and once we have some clear answers, you know, invite you to come back in and explain some of the detail a little better. Does that work?
Be quite happy to.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Trying to stay warm out there. It's not like you're getting much warmer in here.
Well, a scale of 1 to 10, 5 being wicked cold, it's about a 5.
I have to do something else stupid, so you can move off of that one.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're going to pass over item three. We're not ready for that yet. Brings us to four, which is approve order of taking for Gilboa Street and possible votes.
This is an item that you already voted on back in July. We've been having issues with the delivery to town council. He finally did receive it, and then he sent it off, and apparently the registry of deeds did not receive it. So, I would ask that you revote and re-sign, and then I will mail it to the registry. Please.
I move that we execute -- I'm sorry. I move that we approve the order of taking as presented.
I'll second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right. And now designate special employee a tutor and possible vote.
As you recall, you have twice now approved special employee designations under Mass General Law 268A. This is another one that has cropped up that we need to designate also. So, I did put the wording down for you to vote for this, for the tutor, please.
I move that we vote to designate all school department tutors as special municipal employees under Mass General Law's Chapter 268A.
Second. Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
So, the Code Red Emergency Notification Policy, first reading, going on record saying that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen should be allowed to issue a Code Red, just saying.
What are the Code Red?
Read it.
Nothing.
How are you?
So, should we start off saying Code Red is an administrative tool?
Yes.
For the appointed members of town government.
Did Matt Wojcicki order the Code Red?
You've a lot to say when it comes to the Code Red, yes. So, we have gotten a couple sample policies from Code Red. Matt and I have been working on one, putting it together with the other chiefs and John in emergency management. I don't have a copy of the one that you put together.
It's here. So, the general scheme here is that the new website, which is coming along steadily, and I'll talk about that in my report, has a basic notify me, and people can opt into that feature of the website. It's more of a virtual town hall than it is a website. So, if the chief Vincent wants to remind people to get a burning permit, one they can use a burning permit, that's never going to rise to the level of something where we'd use emergency communications for. He can put that out on the website, and people who have opted to get community news on their phone or on their other devices will receive that reminder from the chief. The next tier would be, you know, what involves the whole town, but is not necessarily an emergency. We're going to close North Street Bridge, and the detour will be Mechanic Street, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We will put that out for everybody, because there's so much traffic on Main Street, but it's still not an emergency, but we'd use Code Red anyway. We'd schedule what's called a launch to -- because they will -- they have these massive dialer, you know, computerized dialers that can rip right through a town like Douglas in a matter of a couple of minutes and reach every signed-up phone number and deliver that pre-recorded message.
I think it was almost like -- the numbers were amazing. It's almost like if you wanted to, you could contact 60,000 people within minutes with those amount of numbers, with, you know, the message that you can get out there and how quickly you can get it out there is phenomenal. But like Matt was saying, you know, there's going to be some non-emergency messages that obviously we're going to put together the policy on that will be run probably through Matt or his office for approval, which any department could use. And you can have designated areas, for example, like water sewer. If they had to put something out there, they could put a list of just specifically water sewer users. So, all the people who don't have it aren't going to get the message. But there's groups that you can build. There's a lot that you can do with it. And obviously, any incident emergency, say, missing child in a certain area, or, you know, anything kidnapping, bank robberies... or, you know, anything kidnapping, bank robberies, so whoever you're looking for, you can get the message out there very quickly. So there's multiple facets that you can use it for.
So the policy would establish that non-emergency messages would never be sent to people before a certain hour in the morning or after a certain hour in the evening. It kind of sets up the expectation that if you get a Code Red message from the town of Douglas in the middle of the night, you should probably pay attention. Because you've been selected to get it and it's definitely an emergency. And we'd use regular daytime hours to, because the system will leave a message, it will text messages during the day so that, you know, people see it. And of course, the website would be updated to have the same information on the homepage. But when it comes to emergency messages, this is where the additional authorizations with so-called launch codes, somebody... there's a lot of money involved here, so you can only send a message if you have a code, which the chairman desperately wants.
Checks and balances.
Checks and balances.
We have to have checks and balances in place, that's why the codes...
On record as opposing that idea.
So the notion would be that...
Like having the nuclear codes here with this Code Red, yeah.
There would pretty much always be someone on the dispatch desk downstairs that is eligible to use the system. Incident command, incident commander or one of the chiefs of the public safety departments could reach dispatch and say, okay, this this rises to the level, we're really going to let people know there's something going on. If there's a horrible fire at Hayward Landing and there's residences all around it, you'd want to send out a Code Red message. It's one of the ways you notify people in addition to knocking on their door. You just press the launch code, you assign that particular calling list with a message and out it goes. So that's how it works. We're just still rolling this out, so...
You realize how appealing you make this sound to me?
I know, I know.
Code Red, launch code, I'm getting like really, like, I think I need access.
All we have to do is say barbecue and I guess we're done. So, in the grand scheme of things, we're going to be training on Thursday with Code Red for, you know, all the whiz-bang bells and whistles of the system. We will probably launch in so-called all-call, so we'll send a test message that lets people know that we have certain numbers. Code Red goes out and buys databases with phone numbers in them. Most people don't realize, but a lot of times they sign up for things and they disclose a cell phone number or a landline number.
Signing agreement at the bottom?
Right, exactly.
And it's out there.
It's out there and somebody can buy it. And typically, the coverage is actually really good. We'll send out an all-call and then the website operation would be such that you log in with your information and if you don't want to receive messages anymore, you opt out of the system. When we did this in Tiberian, we had people who said, well, I still want Code Red, I just didn't want all five of my devices to go off at the same time, it's a little bit jarring. So they would whittle that down to two devices or opt out altogether. Most people stay with it because they realize it has value. The thing about not calling too early in the morning is also a learning on my part. I gave my TPW director a launch code and he decided to tell people at quarter or five in the morning that there would be no trash pickup today and there was a small riot. So we won't send non-emergency messages that early in the morning or late at night. But other than that, that's pretty much what this boils down to. We've been working with the public safety chiefs and it was town meeting that approved the additional $1,800 or so to go to the civil defense account that allowed us to go forward with the system.
So, and because it's being used for emergency management, it's outside of the DNC, do not call?
That's correct.
Yeah. But people can opt out as well, so...
Still opt out.
And I think you're going to see more people are going to, very few people are going to opt out because people want the information. It's not going to be used frivolously.
And I think that's the key, if you're not sending out...
There's a lot of things that we can get out through social media, website and Facebook page, but if we're going to use Code Red, it's going to be significant non-emergency messages, you know, as well.
That's the reason they won't give me a launch code.
More often than not, I think you're going to see it's going to be used for emergency situations.
I think when we first discussed this, I mentioned, we had a silver alert in Tiberian where we tracked somebody down very quickly because the message went out to a discreet neighborhood, you know, we think somebody's wandering, lost. And there was also a B and E in progress that a neighbor saw, that called in the dispatch, dispatched, launched to be on the lookout basically for the neighborhood and they were able to direct first responders to where the gentleman had run into the woods. He somehow got away, but his car didn't, so they eventually got arrested. So it's a very useful system, made on a very practical day-to-day basis.
Okay.
So we need this policy and tonight would be the first reading. We can review it a couple.
Yeah, we're getting there, we're getting there. We've got a good base, so we'll iron it, more things out Thursday when we meet and get the training, so everybody will be here so we can iron some things out.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, so approve and sign 2019 liquor licenses and possible votes.
In your packet is the listing of the licensees. My checklist, ABCC's calendar, which will be going out to the license holders. Per Mass General Law, I just want to remind you that all liquor licenses automatically renew. Your vote today will confirm that all the applications are complete, that they've met all the requirements that they need to meet for both ABCC and the town, which are a little bit different and some of the same. The selectmen did vote a few years back, had a policy for fire inspection. All the licensees have been inspected. If there were any violations or recommendations, they will be working with the fire department to resolve those. It's not something that I hold their license for. There is a fire inspection certificate, rather, that on-premise license holders get, which is different than the regular fire inspection that is required by ABCC that is signed off by the fire chief and the building inspector and everyone that that was required to get that does have it, so all the applications are complete.
We have any problem children in there or is everything good?
Everything looks good to me, Mr. Chairman.
Just out of curiosity, I know some of these owner-managers have changed, updated them licenses. Like, for example, Chris Nelson has no logo.
They were, they notified ABCC, ABCC told them that they should do the renewal first and then do the change of manager. Now, some of the other ones, Beagle Club just did a change, he's just, there's, was just approved by ABCC and, right.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor licenses as presented.
Seconded. Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. ABCC has gone back to their old way of doing things. So now you have two forms that you need to sign, the license and then their form verifying that everything is is done.
Essentially, the Commonwealth doubled the paperwork load.
Yes, they took it away and then they put it back.
It was my interpretation, right.
So, well, we have our 63,000 things to sign.
Minutes.
Minutes? November 6th, November 20th, regular and executive sessions.
I see November 13th.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I forget to put November 17th in there? Why not?
We have November 13th and November 20th.
What does that say?
I can't, I can't really read it from here.
This is November 6th?
No, November 13th, let's go by the top page.
That is the top page.
Not that one, the minutes.
On a scale of one to 10?
I didn't have them right away, I had to, I had to, it's been proactive.
Five being the best, Matt.
It's time to retire. Okay, November 13th prior to your town meeting.
13th, right.
I move that we approve those. Does Matt's as presented?
I would second that, Washington.
Do we want to retain any executive session minutes?
No, these aren't executive yet.
Aren't. All right, so made by Mike, seconded by Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the next ones would be November 20th, regular and executive.
I move that we approve those minutes retaining the executive session minutes.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Your report? Or am I wrong on the agenda? Is there something I'm missing? Just saying.
I think all of that is a hint to be brief.
No, no, not at all.
No, it's not.
You take your time.
Just make sure you get your dates correct, Mr. Minister.
Why don't we talk about November 6th?
So, this week being the week of December 3rd, just to give you a sense of activity in our office, we're scheduling and conducting department head evaluations, performance evaluations, with the goal of being done with those before the winter holiday. And, you know, budget accordingly, based on those recommendations. I think I'll summarize the recommendations for the board when I'm finished with the work and there will probably be votes necessary. When Mr. Purcell was your interim administrator, he recommended that department heads be brought into a contractual relationship with the town, which is a project that I think early on, if my recollection is correct, the board asked to be completed when I was first hired, so we're going through that process now. Revising all the job descriptions, building the basis for a contract and evaluating performance. So there's a certain amount of, I don't want to call it invisible work, but it's just not public, you know, that doesn't take me out to the streets to talk to people about things they can see, but it's a lot of work, it's important for the town, for the morale of the staff, to have that ongoing evaluation process and possibility for improvements identified. We make steady progress on the website, it is not... I'll just remind people that the project here was set up a very long time ago by the prior administrator and the prior IT administrator. And when it was set up, the notion was that the existing website would be a very large presence, so it would... the domain name was not going to change and all of the Civic Plus platform widgets, if you would call them that, were going to refer back and forth to the old website and that the whole thing was going to be one big happy family on that domain. There, it really doesn't work that way.
It's a lot of network congestion if you do it that way.
Exactly, so it doesn't really work, so when we had the new IT people come on with us, that one of the things that they discovered was that it would be much cleaner to simply shut down as much of the old website as possible. The one thing that we want to retain is the bulletin board where a lot of agendas and minutes have been archived because that's a very useful tool and people do use it. Long story short, Civic Plus had retained all of the old coding in the background that required the old website to be there. When the new website was built with additional functionality that didn't need to refer back to the old site and the domain name was changed to a .gov domain, there was...
Crash-o-bango.
Crash-o-bango, so that's what happened the day that the whole thing was launched. That's not the town's responsibility, that was Civic Plus's responsibility.
That's a lot of running.
To check that work. So they have now gone through it and we think most of the functionality is there. The online payment system, there needs to be one more thing added to point back to our bank, which is, you know, requires the security conversation and all the rest of it. The calendar was fixed up today, I think we, a staff member inadvertently deleted the calendar widget, so it wasn't working. It's been reinstalled and the calendar's been cleaned up. I think if you go over the new website today, you'll see that the calendar is accurate for the month of December and going forward. So, we're getting there, I think we're still another week or so. I know that some members of the public want to see things go a little bit more quickly, but like I say, it's, when it's fully operational, it is a virtual town hall, the idea is transparency. If you look at it now, virtually anything you want to know about town government, you should be able to find on the new website, so the police department's arrest log, the police department's response log, it's all there and it's organized the way it comes off the dispatch system downstairs, so it's organized chronologically. If you want to know what that call was to my neighbor, you will get the basic information, obviously it's not a police report, but you'll get who responded, when the call came in and what the general gist of the thing was. All of that information is now there and it's just, you know, visually and intuitively a more functional website, so we will get that completed soon. The budget process will begin in earnest fairly soon, so what I was discussing with the finance committee chair today was that the goal for the next finance committee meeting would be to have a preliminary estimate of revenues. All good budgets start with a revenue conversation, not a spending conversation. What do you even think you have available for department heads to utilize? And the second piece of that, or the second step after that, is to do the personnel budget because of contracts and other relationships. It's the part that you're not really going to be able to change very much unless you reorganize some aspect of town government. That gives you a pretty good sense of what you have left for capital and for expense budgets. Right now, I think we, we still look, but be pretty good in the sense that, you know, the override was designed to be a five-year time horizon, we would be in year two of that five-year time horizon, so we're still in that that early phase where the resources created by the override are still there for capital or for, you know, other one-time expenses that the town deems to be necessary and votes on at town meeting. Otherwise, our intention would be to take any accrued free cash and roll it into the next year to build up that ability to absorb future increases in costs. So that's kind of where we are financially with that. I attended training on Friday by the Collins Center, by the UMass Collins Center, at the Fire Academy in Stowe regarding capital planning. And it's really two pieces, it's the capital improvement plan, which really has a 20-year time horizon on it, and all of the policies that a board of selectmen need to put in place to guide the creation of a budget, to allow for capital to be, capital needs to be met in the future. So there's a two-step process there. The plan itself really shouldn't take that long, but we will start to convene the capital improvements committee very soon. I'm looking for quorums there. I think we have all but one member constituted on capital improvements, but there still is a general member of the public at large. So I would, if anybody out there is interested, capital is a necessary component of municipal spending and we'll be working on a much improved grading system to make sure we get defensible results. My last comment for my report would be, in the most vague terms, economic development has gotten very busy. We've had some very solid leads come in with, you know, different industrial zone properties. Conceptually, you can't get from here to there if you don't have those early conversations about, well, what are we even talking about? What are the, you know, what are the parameters? What's the size of the development? Are the people, does the town own the land? If the town doesn't own the land, are the people that do own the land even interested in seeing it developed? All those preliminary conversations occur. I can assure you, they're going very well and we'll have more to report from the Economic Development Commission, I would expect, in the very near future, but there are a couple of key linchpin things that need to be nailed down before the project can be deemed real enough to actually have a conversation and get people interested in the details because unless, anybody who's ever developed property knows, unless you have certain, you know, access to utilities and other things, it's not a project, so if those things don't pan out, then we're just going to start over. You will notice that the town of Uxbridge was successful with its Mass Works grant application to bring utilities across 146 under 16 to service that rather large development site. And I'm sure everybody in town who's gone this way has seen the site work. That long, two long driveways into the woods there, it's going to be a very substantial, it looks like two substantial buildings, or one substantial building and a a piece of property that would be ready for development for any number of buildings, probably just one more the same size as the one in the back. So it's an encouraging... So it's an encouraging development for the town of Uxbridge. We're hoping that that general area is going to appeal to people, the end of 16 coming into 146. So that's the lion's share of what I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So there is one thing under old business. I believe our last meeting, the police chief brought in his proposed policy. I don't know if anybody else has had the chance to review it. I looked at it. I deem it to be more than accessible and rather than have him wait the 30-day period, I'd like to see if we can put a vote together to approve it, move it forward, so that way you can put it into policy without having to wait.
I had a chance to read the whole thing. It's really well done. He clearly spent a lot of time whittling down those however 300 pages he said to 38 or so. My fear when he said that was that, well, have we taken the concepts to such a general level that he said, well, I'm for the sunrise and for rain when it gets cloudy, you know, and that's not what happened. I thought the directives in that code of conduct were very specific and, you know, were real-life situation-driven for our police officers. And so it's an adequate guide for behavior and it's understood what's expected of each and every sworn officer. So it really is a very nice piece of work. I want to congratulate the chief and thank him and his team for all the work they put into it, but I certainly have no hesitation recommending it. It was a good, good job and I had nothing to do with it. I read it for the first time when he presented it.
That's the motion I put in front of us now, is that we accept the policy as presented by Chief Miglianico. Made by me and seconded by Mike. Any discussion on it?
I would share the town administrator's feeling. I thought it was a good job.
Agreed.
Policy can be very difficult to come up with, especially in law enforcement. I think he, he bridged a gap there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that way he doesn't, like I said, I think it was a 30-day wait period and you shouldn't have to sit and wait on that. That was really well done. So how down there, old business. Do we have any new business?
I do not.
All right. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.